Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to close out our budget growth session, and we're going into executive session to discuss real property, which is by the Code of Virginia is something that we can discuss in behind closed doors because it does deal with real property. So I just will entertain a motion, go into executive session.
Men?
Second? All in favor of going into executive session, say so by saying aye. All touched, say so by saying nay. We've got a motion and a second for an executive session. Motion by Dr. Katrin, second by Joe Beasley. Now we need to reach a certification of executive session. Certification of executive session, whereas the Towns and Town Council should be in the executive session on this date pursuant to the permanent recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom Information Act. And whereas 2.1-344.1 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this council that such executive session was conducted in a form that was Virginia lawfully. Now therefore be resolved that the Towns and Town Council hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, all public business matters lawfully exempted from open medium requirements by Virginia while were discussed in the executive session to which the certification requirement applies; and two, all such public business matters that were identified in the motion convening the executive session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Towns and Town Council. So I need a roll call vote to certify the executive session. Vice Mayor Katrin. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fox.
Aye.
Councilmember Beasley.
Aye.
Councilmember Henke.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Alright, so we're out of executive session, and we're right on time to start the public meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the public meeting, thank you for coming. And if you could, I'm in the public meeting order, and if you could stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and dedication.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, community visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Nick, could you lead us to the invitation, please?
Absolutely. Heavenly Father, we thank you that we have the freedom to assemble and gather and discuss and be part of the town's business. We thank you for elected officials, ask that you keep our meeting focused and peaceful, that when the discussions arise and a resolution is come to. We thank you for your continued goodness toward the Jesus name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we start, I'd like to ask that if you have any questions of a speaker that's up here talking, instead of just learning out and talking to them, wait and try to get a meeting afterwards with them, or try to set up time for you to step outside, talk to them, or talk to them when they come back and sit. Don't throw them off while they're up here trying to give a presentation. And if you have a question of council, I ask that you please sign in and address the council at the podium. So now to begin is our special presentation request. We've changed C to be first, so we've got the Main Street Merchants Association, Greta Burton.
Hello. So last time I did this, I stood in the corner because I don't like having my back to hold somebody. Hold out the pointers here. So if you remember, I am Greta Burton, I own the Main Street Merchant, or the Wild Rose. But I am the president of the Main Street Merchants Association. We are formed as from the business owners, we wanted to come together and make a voice for ourselves. Our nonprofit is still in process. I'm sorry, I have one pointer. So yeah, so we wanted to form for a few different reasons. Like I said, to have our voice so that there's someone to ask when events are had on Main Street. What hurts, what helps, things like that. We wanted a platform to be able to give back to our customers that are so gracious to help us keep our doors open. We want to have our own events. You're probably familiar with seeing the New Year's Eve party. That's us, the Chocolate Croft, that was us. Both of those were used as fundraisers so that we can raise money to have more events, to bring more people to Main Street, and more businesses, just more fun things. Let's see. We have a lot of things planned for 2024. We can't wait for the weather to get warm so that we can start doing lots of things to bring people out. Tazewell today did a fantastic job with the revitalization of Main Street and getting new businesses and things happening, and we just want to continue that. Like, we want to help them take the next step. Like, our members, our business owners, we meet monthly so to see like, what do you need? What do we need to do? What are our customers asking for? What are people wanting? What's the community want? What can we do to bring more people to Main Street to support our small town? So like I said, our nonprofit is still in the process, but we do stand 100% on our own. We are formed of solely business owners from House of Taylor to Back of the Dragon. We fund things from our events from our own pockets so that we can do things for our customers, for our community that has helped us. So I think that hits everything on my little list here. All that we ask is that we just get support to help keep our Main Street beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you. So next on the agenda is Skills USA Community Service Project, Boston.
We appreciate y'all letting us come tonight. These three students right here, tell me if you're just helping them in and almost stealing their thunder. We put together a project at Tazewell Primary School for the pre-K kids. They built, we did, with the help of Mr. Roberts. We had masonry involved, carpentry involved, welding involved, and auto body involved. We've not quite finished it yet, but these three students will be taking this project to Virginia Beach to present in Skills USA as a community service project. And we wanted to bring them here tonight to let them present to you all. And I'd like feedback from you guys, and send me an email, let me know what you think. They'll be going, we go in April, I believe April 18th. And I'm gonna turn it over to them, I don't want to steal their thunder, okay? You guys ready? I know you are.
Good afternoon, my name is Alana Capshaw.
I'm Dalton Goldtrick.
And I'm Ella Lawson.
And today we're going to talk to you about our community service project, Spikes Track Track.
Spikes Track Track is a community project that makes you class nine done to allow the kids with disability and pre-kers to have more options to do at recess.
Alana and I have been working with Skies.
In early spring.
Skills USA officers have put together Spikes Track Track to give back to our community. These pictures were taken at a groundbreaking ceremony back in October.
As you see in the picture shown, we allow the pre-k students to be a part of the groundbreaking ceremony.
If you'll see, this is Tazewell Primary School, and this is where the project is located. It educates students pre-k through second grade and is located beside the Tazewell County Career and Technical Center.
And the picture shown here was the first phase of Spikes Track Track coming along. In the top left corner, you see Austin, Adam, and Noah putting the form boards in at the correct measurements they were given. In the middle picture, you see Dylan and I laying the wire in to make sure the concrete is reinforced. In the bottom right, you see Dylan pulling floating the concrete to make sure there's no flaws or holes in it.
In these pictures, you'll also see the masonry class staying after school or even coming in on the weekends to work on this project.
In the top right, you can see I'm putting the form boards at the correct measurements and Mr. Sturton and Montana. In the top left, you see Xander adding a little extra concrete to make sure there's no hole in it. In the bottom left, you see Dylan and I leveling out the gravel to make sure the base of the concrete is correct.
Here in the bottom right, you'll notice the kids were excited and watching the masonry class work and asking them, are you done yet?
In the top left picture shown was the concrete truck first arrived. Dylan is showing the ship, make sure everything goes smoothly. Dylan, Austin, Xander, and Montana, me and Noah were putting loads of concrete. Noah went ahead and started leveling the concrete to the form board until we finished it. In the bottom left, you see Mr. Sturton and Xander and I having to level new concrete with old concrete, make sure there's no slope in it.
Here in the top right, you'll see the young students were amazed at the concrete truck and waiting for the first phase of the project being.
In the top left, you see me moving the screed pole down to make sure the power screed is leveled with the form board. In the bottom left, you see Adam trying to hurry, pull the concrete away so we can finish that up. In the middle picture, you see the second phase of Spikes Track Track fully completed.
In the right picture, you can see Mr. Walter and his classmate Dylan Belcher getting interviewed to be on WBA.
Alana and I were also energy to be on the news.
In the top right, you can see Austin using the concrete rig to level it out. After that was all said and done, you can see my fellow peer Noah allowing one of the pre-k students to help him finish the concrete. And look at the amazing job she's doing.
Here in the bottom left, you'll see Mr. Steele showing me how to finish the concrete, and I was happy to buy.
In the videos, the picture shown here was the final phase of Spikes Track Track coming along. We really had to get a move on because weather was catching us at such a bad time. We even had to employ some of the pre-k students to come help us finish. And look at the amazing job they've done.
In these pictures, you'll see a poster that the pre-k class had made with us with an amount of money they had raised.
The money was originally raised for a masonry field trip. Both us as a class decided to use that money to give back to the community by boarding the food drive.
These pictures were taken at our local food barn in Tazewell, Virginia, where we had took the pre-k class and spent the money that they had raised to buy food for our food drive.
Notice how all the kids were excited and having the times of their lives.
The kids were so excited, they just kept throwing all sorts of food in my bucket. I had to keep putting it back in the shelves.
These pictures were taken at Tazewell Fairgrounds where we had held our food drive, and it was overall an amazing experience.
Here we are giving out food for families who are in need.
In the picture shown here, you can see us delivering food to elderly people's heart. And seeing the small patients, it really touched them to the heart.
As Mr. Steele said earlier, we haven't yet finished the project. But over the past week, the masonry class has been laying brick, and they're installing a sign that the welding shop had made and the auto body shop had painted. And hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have a groundbreaking ceremony.
Thank you for listening to our presentation.
Just amazing the work that you guys do and spot. I mean, you're such a huge contributor to what's coming out of that vocational school. I know when they helped us with the sidewalk project, I mean, it's just been amazing. We always look forward to partnering and helping you guys in any way you can.
We appreciate y'all letting us come by. Y'all will come to the grand opening, I'll send you an email, you get to see those little kids right in the process.
Absolutely.
And the big kids, probably.
Look forward to it, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
The competition they're going to in Virginia Beach, is that a state competition, national competition?
Yes, it's their state, Virginia Beach competition. We're taking 47 students this year.
Awesome.
If they place, a lot of them if they place, most of them if they place first, they're gonna be going on the nationals and finals.
Yep, that's the new.
That's awesome.
Most kids do their work.
So next on the list are four projects that they've come along, Patterson? Dylan, I just saw you.
We got a big group together.
That goes, Patterson.
Hello, if anyone doesn't know me, my name is Kwaney Patterson. I'm executive director of Each One Teach One. And this is Brittany Davis, she's president of our organization. And what we're working on is a community park, and I can't even express to you guys like what has happened in our community over the last couple of months. Everybody's came together from our partner, the town of Tazewell, to the mayor, to the county administrator, the board of supervisors. And we have some updates we want to give you guys, I'm gonna let Brittany take it from there.
So last year we presented, and for some of you that don't know, is we are Each One Teach One Incorporated. We are a 501(c)(1) nonprofit established here in Tazewell County. We are all about empowering our community through mentorship and networking, and our motto is "Together We Are Strong." We were founded in 2020 to provide a place of social gathering, educational opportunities, and a nurturing environment for both the physical and mental health of the people of Tazewell County and surrounding areas. Through mentorship and networking, we foster pride in our community and try to bring together everyone from all various backgrounds, promoting diverse interactions, inclusivity, and community learning as well as contributing to economic development. We strive to create an overall better quality of life for the community, and we do this by creating opportunities for personal and collective growth such as awareness and advocacy for mental and physical health, business consulting, coaching, community service projects, financial literacy, mentorship, networking, personal development, professional development, volunteer opportunities, and to... The board of directors is Executive Director Kwaney Patterson, President Brittany Davis, Vice President Freddie Bynum, Treasurer Hunter Holmes, Secretary Todd Smith, Chairperson Peggy Wilson, Chairperson Parents Tax Lee, Chairperson Ishmar Armstrong, and Chairperson Roland Patterson. Like I said, we were here to update you on our current project, the Warhawk Community Park located at 374 Carline Avenue. It is adjacent from the Clinch Valley Community Action Head Start, formerly known as the Carline Community School. It will pay homage to those who were blessed from the Carline Community School to the Tazewell County High School formerly known as the Grant Keller School, which is now the Grant Manor. We hope to have our site plans finished here soon. Shout out to Amanda. And it should include benches, community garden, horseshoe areas, fitness area, equipment, playground equipment, shaded areas, shelters, refresh rooms, universal walkway, and a walking path. The availability for the fitness and play equipment will encourage the community to be more active and promote mental and physical health while developing a sense of community. Funding thus far, donations, fundraisers, and grants totaling at about $312,000. So we have a donation from the town for basketball equipment, construction and cleanup property and utilities, about $38,000. The Thompson Foundation matching that to about $38,000. The Board of Supervisors for utilities for $15,000. We have collected through fundraisers and donations, $7,000. Clinch Valley Community Action has sent a grant out for us for fencing for $76,000. And the county administration has sent out a grant for the courts to be at $138,000. This was from a groundbreaking ceremony, May 26, 2023. And typically, you are breaking ground, but this was the part that really started the whole pushing more for our monetary obligations and getting more support from our community. Just a couple of out lines of what we hoping. We will have the finals in a couple of months. We are actually hoping to break ground June 1st, 2025.
Yes. Mayor Hook and myself have actually been talking about something that just exploded in our town, and I don't know if everybody knows about pickleball yet, but it's super popular. And Jeff Mansour, who's with the Thompson Foundation, he told me about it like four years ago when I really first came into this and started a nonprofit. And Mayor Hook's wanted to acquire some land, plus the liquor store, but I think it was pretty expensive for that to occur. So we were thinking about partnering up and putting the pickleball courts adjacent to the basketball courts and making them really nice with permanent nets and fencing. So that's another addition. But on every level, I just thank you guys for having us. We've been working with you guys for four years now to make this happen, and it's finally come into fruition, and I just can't express enough gratitude, you know. It's almost like right in front of this place where Clinch Valley Community Action is, there was a community center. And that's where we grew up, that's where I made with some of my friends, and I had to play ping pong, which converted to pickleball. And there's a part behind it that we're now revamping, and this is history, you know. It's just, I can't even express. Just thank everybody for what you guys have done and helping us get it together. And we're gonna continue to execute, and hopefully, now that we have the match grant between the town, between the $38,000 for the land, the two basketball goals, the...
Courts.
The courts, helping with some of the clearing out of the land and stuff like that, and personnel. As soon as we get the site plan done, you know, the town is our liaison for all the funds. So we'll be doing invoices to the towns as we get projects underway. And we also have a donation of some retro flag on equipment from the Virginia Housing Authority, my friend.
John Stiltner.
John Stiltner. And he also made a donation to pay for the...
Transportation.
The fuel with...
That we'll be partnering with J&amp;S Transportation, Justin Thomas. So we've tried to keep it as local and community involved as possible.
But it's been a complete community effort. But we won't take any more than that, Tom. We just wanted to give everybody an update, and thank you guys especially for continuing to give us a push and, you know.
And a special thank you to Leanne Reagan, the interim town manager, for also being a really good push, not from just this position she is in now, but from where she was previously. She's been a very big part and asset as well.
And Amanda as well, she's been from very day one, introduced me to Jeff Mansour of the Thompson Foundation, Jay Shaw of the Shaw Foundation, which we also have a grant in with. The Skills Foundation hasn't responded yet to a grant. You know, it's been a really complete community effort from almost every organization we think of, we reach out, and they've all made positive feedback, charisma. Did I forget anybody?
Just the community as a whole, because individuals have definitely put more time and volunteer hours or more monetary donations, and some want to remain anonymous, and we just don't want to forget anybody. So we thank you for helping put the unity back in the community.
Thank you again.
With pickleball, what you talked about, I was going to brought this issue up. Somebody laughed about it when I mentioned pickleball. It has two...
Thanks, guys, we appreciate the update. So next on the agenda is the Virginia Cooperative Executive Board camp request. Pam Park? Going once. Alright. So we will move on to the next THS DECA request. Interim manager.
I have received a donation request from DECA. This was for their state trip, which they actually, I think, had just come back last week. They did take 20 students, and I do think they had students placed, so I think they will be continuing on. So again, this is 20 students that they have taken. They are asking for a donation. It says their expenses have come just under $2,000. And last year, there was a $200 donation made.
Did we not have any students last year?
Sorry, I don't...
They're asking for a donation from what they just came back from, or to a national competition?
This was actually dated February the 9th. So I had just missed their previous meeting, but I do think that they're wanting to go on to...
National. Nationals is in California, and that they did have a couple of courts.
They've got two students placed in there, and the same groups of two students went last year.
Thank you, Jeff.
So we're looking at two students going to California.
Well, the one that they put in was for the 20 students to go to Virginia. So they're probably trying to recoup some of the funds that they outweighed. So the guidelines for 20 students would be up to 500. I don't know if you want to put a little bit extra in there for those couple of students that are going to nationals, because that's gonna be much more expensive than the state.
Have they already designated that they are going to nationals at this point? There's two.
There's two, yeah.
I'm making my assumption for 700, only if I'm correct.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second for $700, any discussion? I think we just recently raised our donation guidelines, so I think it'd be good to go above.
Well, what were...
Where? That's 700. That's 500.
It was 500 for the 20, but then I'm sure they're gonna be coming back and asking for money to go to nationals too. So go ahead and give it right now for... Here, there's the...
What is it, for two? Two, it's up to three, I'm one.
Up to 300. So, you know, if we have two going to nationals, then 100 each. So...
I can give a justification.
Yeah, let them know that's nationals too.
Any other discussion? All in favor of donating $700 to DECA, they said by saying aye? All touched, they said by saying nay? Alright, so motion carries. Next is the Southwest Virginia Partnership Program Request. Interim manager ready?
I've received a donation request from Friends of Southwest Virginia, the Crooked Road, Virginia's Heritage Music Trail. They have asked for a donation in the '24-'25 fiscal year. So not in the fiscal year that we're in right now. They have asked for $1,500. I did not find where we could give a donation last year or the year we're in right now.
Well, we have in the past.
We have in the past, but I didn't see it in the last couple of years.
Does that $1,500 buy signage?
We did advertisement.
For your yearly investment, you are received the opportunity to receive two Crooked Road community sign packages. So we wouldn't advertise.
Yeah.
And it says the partnership funds will be dispersed amongst three organizations, Round the Mountain, the Crooked Road, and Friends of Southwest Virginia Marketing Regional Development.
And that, we could work that into our budget that we're working on right now.
You could.
Okay, I would make a motion that we work it into our budget.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of providing $1,500 to Southwest Virginia Partnership Program Request, they said by saying aye? All touched, they said by saying nay? Alright, so we'll provide $1,500 donation. So next on the list is the Southwest Virginia EMS Council. Interim manager ready?
I see the donation letter from the Southwest Virginia Emergency Medical Services Council. As council is well aware, there is a budgetary problem within these state EMS services. The Southwest Virginia EMS Council has asked for $500 from us. However, let me tell you what they've done for us. They funded three ambulances, cardiac monitors, two stretchers, and two lupus machines, which is what does the compressions. So that's a pretty hefty thing that they want to us. If we get all that for $500, I'm a whore. I will make a motion to...
I'll second that motion. Alright, so I've got a second to provide $500, any discussion? Was there additional training? Was there additional training that they provided in those services for our local EMS?
I know that the area EMS director does attend meetings and such through there. So I would think that training would be a part of that.
Just so I have a motion and a second, all in favor of providing $500 to Southwest Virginia EMS Council? Stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they say so by saying nay. All right, motion carries. So next on the list, Tassau County Chamber of Commerce, October Fest sponsorship request.
I am back again this month. The chamber is asking for a sponsorship for October Fest and also to be our partner in our ATC M L P grant. And the sponsorship would go toward the financial obligation for the grant and any other obligation for the channel would just be to market our event, which you all normally do on your Facebook page. Last year, you guys were a partner for our grant and also did sponsor October Fest. Previously, I'm not sure, I think that's not there, but I know last year you did.
What's involved in partnering with the grant request?
It's just a financial obligation and to market the event.
Okay. So
Which will, if we
Y'all market it.
We'll market it anyway, but you know, if we do the sponsorship that covers in the grant request as well.
Yes.
Okay. And I think that it said that we gave you $500 last year.
$500 last year. And sponsorship started at $350 and they go to $500.
I'd be willing to do the $500, the bronze sponsor again this year. I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so I've got a second to be a bronze sponsor for October Fest in the Chamber of Commerce. Any discussion? So all in favor of providing $500 for this sponsorship request, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they say so by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. So next on the list is Tassau County Fair Request. Irma Mitchell.
I don't see Irma. However, she did provide us a letter from the Fair Association. She stated that in the past that the town has always been a sure advertisement fair. Says that we have given $2,500 plus signed a page in the fair book, which is $300. So she is asking that we will continue to support it with that.
So historically, we've done $2,500 each year, correct?
We have supported the fair, yes.
And that's been worked into our budget.
Right. I don't know. Sure, it's been working into our budget.
I mean, if this is something, I mean, I don't see the fair going away.
No.
So
I'm making a motion for it.
I think that we've just worked into our budget.
So I've got a motion and need a second for the $2,500 request, or it'd be what, 2800? Wait not a second.
I mean, it will be whatever we work into our budget as.
Okay. So do we want to wait and contact Ms. Mitchell and say we can do X amount based on budget figures?
So are you all saying we'll do this like after June 1st?
Yeah. When is the, the fair's in August, right?
I believe, yeah.
We'll get our budget approved.
Yeah.
I mean, do it every year, so we might as well keep going with it.
Right. But yeah, I mean, I say that, yeah, it is be in the budget for next year.
So okay, what, right now or?
Yeah, I don't want to be working on it in the budget.
You got a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Well, the motion was to work it into the budget.
Interesting.
You can second that if you want.
I think
They made a motion.
They made a motion to approve it.
To approve it.
He made a motion to approve it.
Oh, okay.
He could amend it to say it's in the, put it in the
Do you want to work it into the budget? Or do you want to go ahead and give it to them right now?
What do you think, manager?
It'd be easier
I would like to work it into the budget.
All right, we're putting it in the budget.
All right, so you're retracting your motion and changing it to work it to the motion, or into the budget.
What they're going to get, right?
Yes.
All right, let's make sure.
So I've got a motion or a second now. Now I need your motion, Emily.
Oh, yeah. I guess that would be a second to work it into the budget.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of working the fair request into the 2425, please, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, they say so by saying nay. All right, so that will be
And just for clarification, that's what we're doing with the Southwest Virginia Partnership Program as well, is working that into the budget.
Next is the THS Art Class DC Trip Request.
All right, this is for us, so And we would have brought our presentation, but I didn't know what you guys had to criticize.
Oh, we're high tech.
We are, we're high tech. All right, guys, so my name is Miranda Williams, and I'm the art teacher at Tassau High School. And these are some of my students. We are taking a trip to DC this year. It is the first time that, and well, it is more than just the art advanced classes and also art club. We've also opened it up to the government classes as well. And we are taking 40 students. It costs $480 per student to go. This is an overnight trip. It also, the trip includes our bus fare down, the hotel, and also our dinner and our breakfast and all additions to everything. We are going to not only see all of the art museums, which we are really interested in, but it will also help us. We are going to tour all the monuments and tour the Capitol as well. So we are trying to raise money to go to DC. So we have done quite a bit of fundraising so far, and we have raised over $4,000 to go. But with a cost of $480 per student, for the kids going, you're looking at close to $17,000. So each one of my students here, I will let them introduce themselves, what grade they're in, and let them talk about the benefits of them going to Washington DC. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Darian Gibson. I'm a senior at Castle High School, and I'm also the art club president. I'll be talking about like the importance of going to the museums and how that benefits us as like an art class and into our future. So with us going to the museums and galleries, we will be able to look into the art and the history, and it will really help us benefit by developing our own styles, so then we can go on and make this into a career. Because I'm not the only one, my other members and fellow classmates also really want to, would try to make this into a career. I mean, it's every art student's dream to be an artist. But that's not only what we're going to do. We're also looking at, like Ms. Williams says, the monuments, the other stuff as well, the cultural aspects. And this would really help develop the students and me myself, like help us see what's outside of Castle and like help us understand the world better. Because it's, it's a pleasure to grow up here. However, there is not that many diverse experiences that we can learn from here. So it would really help us benefit us from seeing that. So yeah, I'll let my vice president continue from here.
So my name is Will Haren. I'm the vice president of the Castle High School Art Club and a sophomore in high school. Planning this trip has proven to be an overwhelming task. The main issue being the amount of funds that we have. Many students who really wish to be able to go on this trip don't have the funds and come from less fortunate families who can't afford the almost $500 it takes to get to DC. And this is taking away from an incredible opportunity to learn and grow both as a student and as a person. This opportunity will provide students with countless educational opportunities. Visiting Washington DC provides students with, from underprivileged schools, a unique opportunity to learn about history, art, and governance firsthand. This trip also allows students to indulge in cultural enrichment, like Darian said. Experiencing art, experiencing art museums, monuments, and the Capitol exposes students to diverse cultures, ideas, and artistic expressions, broadening their perspectives and opening their minds. So it would be incredibly beneficial for as many students as possible to make it on this trip.
Hi, my name is Devon Miller. I'm a sophomore in high school and also an active art club member. I think that this trip would be fundamental for art club and seeing as Ms. Williams hasn't taken art or art club on a trip that's monumental as this. DC is also rich in a lot of historical significance, offering students a chance to engage with the nation's past, including pivotal events and influential figures. Visiting landmarks such as the Capitol can inspire, can inspire students to aspire to higher education, careers in public service, or creative endeavors in the arts. Learning about the democratic process and other things of government at the Capitol fosters a sense of civic engagement and responsibility among students.
Hi, everyone.
You did great.
My name is Adrian Thomas, and I'm a junior at Castle High School. And I think this trip would be very beneficial because exploring these museums and seeing all the artistic movements and the different art styles would just form a real appreciation from the students. But not only that, providing this opportunity with students who are underprivileged or don't have the funding for this, it would be a really cool experience. I think everyone deserves that. Not only that, but it allows students to see themselves as a part of the broader national narrative of things and to be more diverse. Analyzing these monuments and artworks and historical sites encourages critical thinking skills as students interpret symbolism, context, and historical significance. And with the community aspect of this, it would allow not just the students to make community overnight and make memories, but it'd also get us to be closer with our teachers like Ms. Williams or some of the chaperones. And I just think it'd be really cool to be able to have that certain bond with these people that I love so dearly. Also, seeing students that come from more underprivileged schools have the same opportunities as they're more financially wealthy counterparts would just be amazing to see in general. Yeah. But last thing I would want to add is, Ms. Williams has worked very hard on this, and we deserve it a lot, but not just us, she deserves this as well. Thank you.
All in favor? Tried to make your teacher cry. What's important you have for the county office?
On the county?
From the school system?
From the school system. Well, we, I mean, our principal said that we could go and he's helping us. So we're doing fundraising for, but we've really kind of been doing fundraising on our own.
Is it charged to county?
The county, no.
What sort of
The board of supervisors, not yet. So they're on our list.
So if we go by the guidelines, it's up to 500. We're taking 40 students, correct?
We are taking 40 students.
Well, I'm staying and working hard raising funds at the basketball games and paying faces and, you know, going out and really hitting the pavement. So I make a motion for 500.
I'll second.
I've got a second vote to provide $500. Any discussion? It's my sister-in-law. Should I not vote on my sister? Thank you, good.
You should have stayed. I'm pretty sure it's going to pass.
Where's your sister-in-law?
So I've got a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of providing $500 to THS Art Class to help fund this trip? Stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they say so by saying nay. Good job, guys.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so next on the agenda is new business recognition. Unfortunately, we have none at this time.
Hold on. We also had a letter from the 4H camp request. Did we make a note of that?
Yeah, it was Tim Spark.
Right, she's not here, but I mean, she did send out a letter. The same way Irma did.
Okay, this is the letter that we have received from the 4H camp, Virginia Walker Extension Council. They are planning to take 125 campers, teen counselors, and adult volunteers on a four-day, three-night trip. Each camper is required to pay $50 deposit, and they are eligible to apply for a camper scholarship to cover the remaining $195. And it looks like the price is $245 per camper. But they will at least be required to pay the $50 deposit.
How many students did you say are campers?
125 campers, teen counselors, and adult volunteers.
All from Tassau?
I would
It's Tassau County.
Tassau County. They, usually at the 4H camp, there's like Tassau County and another county go during the same week. But I know Tassau takes a lot of students. There's buses lined up to take them down there, or at least they were when I dropped my daughter off last year. And I'll also be dropping her off next year.
She's had way too much.
What does?
She's had way too much.
She had a great time.
I would prefer to see how many students from Tassau Hospital or Tassau.
So I definitely mentioned So think we're going to table it? If you could try to find out how many have around counting?
Sure.
Count it out. Or count it out.
I mean, Mayor, if you weren't paying my daughter's fee, that's fine.
So we don't have at least one.
Well, actually, my niece is going too, so there's two.
All right, so next on the agenda is, so we went through new business recognition and we have none unfortunately. So next is approval of minutes from the council meeting on February 13, 2024. Need a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, stay so by saying aye. All opposed, they say so by saying nay. All right, motion carries. Next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report for February 2024. Need a motion to approve? I like that motion. I guess a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of financial statements and financial report for February 2024? Stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, they say so by saying nay. All right, motion carries. Next is the committee conference updates. Councilmember Davis is going to give us a planning commission committee update.
Planning commission last Monday, and we talked about the rezoning of the Hillsborough Drive area and the high school areas. We also talked about a building and saw some pictures of the building that were up for demolition. And that's what we did.
I think one of them is coming up in here, right?
I think the rezoning is coming up.
Okay, so any questions? Okay, so we're gonna ride along. We're gonna get an IDA update from Terrence Pyke.
Hello. Hi, guys. I wrote a letter that's in your packet. I wasn't planning on reading the letter unless you'd like for me to, but I wanted to see if y'all had any questions about our next steps with the Bolion property in Tassau.
Is the right idea to question?
I mean, we have, the grant gives us most of the funds.
Yeah. That's actually a good news story piece from this because the IDA had previously approved to have it demoed.
Right.
And I can't recall the exact reason that it was tabled, but.
It was taken back because there was a grant that became available that we might be able to repurpose the building.
And in this case, your IDA team came together and, yeah, it's $45,000, perhaps that's going towards the demolition.
Yep. We learned through our fact-finding mission with the DEQ that it's going to cost millions of dollars to re-purpose, to keep both of the structures, so because we don't have any outside funding or any, you know, grants already is received and based upon feedback from the community, it seems like this is the most fiscally responsible way to move forward.
And you're going down to the slab? Is that correct?
Yes, our plan is to have them retain the slab, yeah. Our Phase Two site assessment with Zantec, they emailed me and me about making sure that they can get in, so the Phase Two site assessment's covered by the DEQ, and the purpose of that is to make sure that there's no vapor leaks or anything that we aren't aware of that could potentially prevent future site reuse. So, but we have been in contact with the farmer's market to see if they'd be interested in potentially partnering with us, put up a full-town pavilion and kind of outdoor space in that location based upon.
So you haven't talked to the farmer's market?
Yes, talked with their director, Christina, this week.
Good.
That slab is in excellent condition.
Yeah, that was the one good thing from the county. The rest of it is concrete and woodchins.
That's, so this has to tie, right?
Yep. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
No, just look forward to the progress, huh?
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys.
So next is unfinished business miscellaneous. Was there anything? I don't see it. Next, we're gonna go to new business and go to the second reading for amendment to zoning ordinance for industrial general M-1 zone for solar use. Terrence Pyke?
This is the second reading, first reading was placed back on February 13, so we'll keep this as brief as I can. Chapter 23 zoning, Article 2 District Regulations, Division 10, Industrial General M1 specifically applies to Section 23-53 use. Be ordained by the council of town in Tassau, agenda hereby enacted following amendment to Town Code Section 23-53 regarding committed uses in industrial general M1 zone. Section 23-53 use amended subsection 32, private solar energy facility, subparagraph A, capacity of not more than 3 megawatts, paragraph B, capacity of greater than 3 megawatts with a special use permit. All of the uses identified in the section will remain unchanged.
Does it just need to vote?
Make a motion to approve?
I guess a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the amendment to the zoning ordinance for industrial general M-1 zone for solar use? Stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stay so by saying nay. All right, motion carries.
Take effect 30 days from today.
Okay, thank you. Next is an independent state fireworks discussion. Manager Reagan?
So while the snow was flying here, Susan was looking at the air, trying to find firework companies. So she has been able to get in contact with two different companies. One is American Fireworks, who we used last year, and in 2023, the quote and price that we paid was $11,500. This year, for American Fireworks, the cost would be $12,000. It would be held on July the 3rd at 9:30. We also have a quote from Pyrotechnico. It's a 15 to 20-minute show. It will be held on July the 3rd, and it is $20,000. You know how they call it for Latin? I said 12. 12 sounds good.
So why not the 4th?
We, they didn't have it.
So there's no one, we don't have anybody available?
We started in January.
I know, maybe we can start like October.
With, with.
My guess is they probably have standing.
They had us actually written down for the sixth, and they were into the assumption that we typically had Saturday after, so it would have been, took some work.
Did you set up fireworks? Did you talk set fireworks on the car line? Last year, fireworks.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, let's talk a little bit now.
So, do you need to vote to go forward with the 12,000?
That would be very nice if we could. I'll make a motion to go forward with the 12,000.
Second. Okay.
So any discussion?
I just want to make it clear that there was nobody available for the 4th, and so we tried to do the 4th, we were not known.
She did try.
And even if they were, they would likely be very much more expensive.
So, does that impact, you had your community event, Dick and Fitch a meeting a couple weeks ago? Miss Williams, does that change any of the events from where you got your discussion?
Okay, I've got a second, so all in favor of approving the $12,000 for the fireworks? Stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stay so by saying nay. All right, celebrate July 3rd.
This is from really late, so that it runs into the 4th.
I like it. We're the first fireworks in the 4th.
Just to caveat on the fireworks, is there an incumbent weather plan or what's?
There's not. We get one day.
What happens if it's incumbent weather or $12,000? We're out?
Nobody do their rain dance.
Yeah.
Well, you heard Jonathan say.
I want to run our rain that day.
We don't need the people to put them off. Let's just go with the fireworks.
We can take them to the car line and the 4th.
Is there any, could we maybe approach and say, like, if you get rain down one year, and maybe the following year you can get a cut rate or?
What else?
Yeah, it would be worth asking.
What else? I think I know the answer to that, but, okay.
I'm sure that, I'm sure they have no rain.
So we gotta go with that? So next on the agenda is the review planning commission recommendation to set a public hearing for rezoning request for Hillsborough Drive and the Tassau High school area to be rezoned from A1 to R1 and R2. Enter Manager Reagan.
So in your packet, Chris Hurley has put a letter in here from the planning commission, and as Gilling has spoke, they have recommended that we change some zoning from agriculture to residential 1 and residential 2, and I will turn it over to Ken.
These two areas we're looking at presented as planning conditions, these are all zoned agriculture, and all the Hillsborough residential houses, pretty high, of course, and the high schools are also zoned agriculture, which got apartments, a few houses there, and then two schools. Of course, if you put a school in R1, or rezoning inclusive, we can have R2 or R1 the same, rezoning more or less. And we're presenting the change in this area here as hash to partially R1 and R2 at every single lane and out on Market Street. And then the high school area being completely R2, schools are allowed R2. As a matter of fact, we have a meeting with the public, a council level or a different level, on what y'all think of that. Originally.
Budget.
This one caused us anything, we, time-wise. I didn't have one, but this is, I did put it in the package.
What type of thing for the people here?
It won't change property value or anything. It will affect that you can't usually have.
One of the questions I had was about the setback distance. So the way you have your circle with, is faith street included in this?
It's already zoned.
For R3, so there's no change in.
It's already zoned R1.
For R1?
Faith street's already zoned R1. Everything behind the church, all the way at Fordland is zoned agriculture. But you got Chris Bankership's house, Thompson House, Fowler, which others.
So the setback distances and all that stuff gets greencolored in, or are they already compliant with that? Is it just?
There's agriculture done.
No, I think there's the R1.
Setbacks, we're a little more strict, but these areas are a little larger. Let's walk down here, the high school area gets all extended, it's a smaller area.
Do you think you'll need more than 15 minutes or 30 minutes for a public hearing?
I know when we first done the zoning out at Drytown, finished up on the first time here, we had a public hearing, a public meeting, or a party meeting, which my people wanted time, and the people could know what's going on, and then I could bring it back to council.
How many, how many others would you have to send out?
24 parcels at the high school and 42 at Hillsborough. Most of it's, yeah, just a second, I give. I'm carrying the council, I go to the high school, I go to the home office, I got some letters there and put it down.
Exactly, there's your question too. Their grandfather, bottom line, any new construction, that guy's required with the new setbacks, but any existing structures when you're changing the zone like that, their grandfather. But all those parcels, I think we looked at all of them that are there that have gone, that go to an act group, to an R1, they're gonna need setbacks.
Easily setbacks are called.
The parcels are so much larger than the minimum area requirements that R1 requires, they're gonna be, they're not gonna be affected by it.
Can we just, we'll see this. I know that any of those are the same.
I'd say.
So if we decide to hold it on a different night, do we need to vote for that? And/or if we hold it on council member night?
I'd say we just hold it on council night. I mean, we could do it a little bit earlier. Do it maybe seven, if there's gonna be more people showing up, you think?
Last time, you had bugs over here.
Yeah, I would give more than 30 minutes. I think it'd be stacked.
What, 6:45 each? Of course, I'm running the hours.
Just adjusting times accordingly. If you have executive session that night, you can set it early.
Right.
I recommend these 45 minutes.
45. Okay.
And I think you'll be fine. I really, once people talk with Chris about it, I don't think, I would say the majority of them are gonna be okay with what's being requested or recommended, because it's not going to affect the property value, it's not gonna affect what they're doing existing with their home. It's gonna bring more uniforming design into that, Chris. That's my estimation.
Well, I'll make a motion that we set it for the next council meeting at 6:45.
Second.
All right, so second, any discussion? Okay, so all in favor of setting the meeting for 6:45 at the next council meeting? Stay so by, stay aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stay so by saying nay. All right, so next on the list is the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, revenue recovery funds usage. Enter Manager Reagan.
So as you know, we are in our budget preparation season for the 24, 25 year. I've asked department heads for a list of their budget requests that you give or do need, and there is an option that we have, if it would be chosen to go this way, we could take some of those requests and use revenue recovery funds for those. We talked about that a little bit in our work sessions, and if you all had an interest in doing that, I'd open up for a discussion.
All of those requests are things that we need to do. I mean, there's things that are broken down, things that our EMS and our fire department need, and the police department, recreation department, I mean, yeah, all of them, I mean, there's definitely a need for those items, and currently, we have those funds. So, I mean, I think that this is something that we need to do.
Is there any other discussion?
Just to be clear, we need to take money that we had set aside for sports complex funding.
Okay.
Right.
The town received ARCA funding, a total of $4.2 million. The town spent the ARCA funds reimbursing themselves for salaries, so the ARCA funds have been depleted. However, we already had funds set aside for salaries in our budget, and those funds become available, and we took those funds and put them in an LGIP account, which is earning a high interest, and we did set those aside for the sports complex.
And we had used some of those ARCA funds for like the playground at Lincolnshire and the splash pad.
Flash pad.
And I think some stuff for the EMS.
And a park truck.
Yeah. So, I hate to see the sports complex go away, but I believe that this is something that is more vital for our community.
Councilmember?
I want to preface this with, I've thought long and hard to write in this, because, you know, the sports complex has been a discussion for many years, but I'd like to make a motion that we repurpose the funding that was allocated for a sports complex to be used for capital improvements to our town. But before I make the motion, I would like to give a brief grant as to whether it's motion necessary. And I'm gonna read this because it's very important and I don't want to miss anything. The majority of the people I've spoken with feel like the sports complex has already been moved away from, but I feel like our citizens need to know what direction our town is moving in. First, I would like to say that I'm not opposed to a sports complex in the town of Tassau, and I don't feel that any council members were opposed to the idea, but there was just funding and infrastructure concerns. In an email dated November 16, 2023, from a previous town manager, it was stated that until further direction from council was given, the sports complex discussion would be closed. It is now four months later, and there's been no discussion of any advancement of the sports complex. The sports complex has been discussed for many years, and the citizens of the town of Tassau deserve to have an answer on how their tax dollars are gonna be spent. The idea of a sports complex was a great idea several years ago, but I feel with Mercer County moving forward with their own sports complex, that this could be detrimental to the success of the sports complex here in Tassau. Many avenues of funding opportunities have been explored, and I want to see the town of Tassau flourish and prosper and become a place where the children have opportunities to advance their careers. We have a wonderful town, and difficult decisions must be made from time to time, but by utilizing these funds, I feel we can make immediate improvements to our town that will benefit all citizens of the town of Tassau. Our town council will prioritize local governmental responsibilities. Our town council will prioritize local governmental responsibilities. And I'll make a motion that we repurpose the funding allocated for a sports complex to be used for capital improvements.
I'll second that motion.
So we've got a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I want a discussion here. you want to put it on the Ramies lot? I don't know if it's, except my, my, my thing is, we need to get our roads fixed, our water lines fixed, and the sewer plant fixed. We keep throwing at. I, I'm talking. But that's my, my issue. But if we can get that done, I'd be glad to go in with whatever they want to do going. Sports complex, there's some kind of problems in Virginia Beach on the sports complex, I don't know. I don't know what's going on down there. And I'm not getting the truth out of somebody that said it's going under and there are million dollars in the hole. I don't know if you can give them to it or not. But that's what I'm worried about for our town. Our town's small, it's not a huge town to, to bring a big project in here. But if it's going to be the point where, uh, we got, we got gym, gym, and high school, we can use all that, utilize all of it. But our town is to, to build our town up. Car line, I'd like to see it go up higher. Good. Out fullway, I don't know if you were interested to sell the Ramies loft or buy it.
Me personally?
Yeah.
Like you.
But it's, that's what I'm talking at, I know. You know, I like the kids to play and have fun, different locations, but it went through me after the night, you know, sports complex. It's a good thing that we can look at for something smaller, but, you know, like I'm saying, it's for our town people that are very, that are barely making it day by day, month by month on their bills. And that really, that really hurts quite a few people. And I think that we should look at that issue because we've got to get our fire department fixed, police department fixed, rescue squad fixed. The Lincolnshire Park looking good, getting better. But I don't want to jump in something like this, put it on saddle, I'm jumping something, put the water lines and the sewer plant and the roads in. That's what I want. And I just think, I like, I like to talk about that later.
Okay, I would just like to reiterate what we're doing. We're taking the money that was set aside for the sports complex and using that money to pay for capital improvements for the town. So it will not be going towards a sports complex. It will be going to departmental requests. It will be going to automatic door openers for the fire department, a keyless entry. It will go for training funds for the fire department. It will go for PPE for the fire department, for the rescue squad, for the police department. It's going for a replacement of the golf cart that is not working at Lincolnshire. And it is going to be replacing that with a side-by-side so they can take residents to the back of the.
Lake.
The lake if they would like it. It is going for a big mower so that our recreation department will be able to mow more efficiently. It is going towards a small paving machine so that we can pave some of our side streets in-house that we do not have to wait for an outside company to do it for us. So it is going to do all of these things for our town instead of building a sports complex.
That would be down.
Four more sections, I understand.
Right. Well, yeah, I mean, we, we are, those are the requests. We have not said exactly what is going to be funded, but we are reallocating the money that would have funded the sports complex to funding capital improvements for the town.
That's correct.
Sorry. So I've, I'd just like to say that I, I can't remember exactly when we had the discussion about the sports complex and, and what we talked, or, you know, what the topic was when we brought it up, but I said previously that one thing I did not want to do with the sports complex was bang my head against the wall without a plan B and, you know, just continue to, to be told no and, and fight for something that was losing that. And I think that, um, I do feel passionately about sports complexes and I felt like it was a, I was on board with it. I thought it was a, you know, a fruitful project, thought it could have been. But we just hit too many stumbling blocks and I feel like we would be banging our heads against the wall, losing, uh, wasting money, wasting time uh, when we can, you know, fulfill some needs of the town and the community and, uh, you know, bring better quality of life to the residents immediately. Uh, we may struggle in the future to find revenue. I hope that doesn't happen, but we can address some needs now and hopefully we can allocate some other resources to, to improve. Hopefully these improvements could help bring businesses, they'll see the improvements and say that this town invests in itself and, and they'll bring some business in here. That's, that's what I hope because we, uh, my fear is we may see some, some, uh, revenue shortages out in the future, but I feel like this is what we need to do at this time.
I hate to see the sports complex go away, but I understand that this is also what we need to do.
I think this is an opportunity for us to help our citizens and our public works, our police department, fire department, EMS immediately.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's all. It's coming, you don't know when it's coming, let's go.
So we've got a second, that was a discussion. So all in favor of reallocating the, what was deemed the sports complex funds to a, a more development type fund for capital improvement? Stay tuned by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, stay tuned by saying nay.
I'll just give my.
All right, motion carries. So anybody signed in on the list where I put Mr. Davis in? Oh.
Yeah, my, uh, reason for coming up today is, uh, just want to get a little clarification about, uh, the facility that's going on up there at Food Line. Is it going to be a facility with doctors or is it going to be a facility with nurse practitioners? Or is it going to be like a Seviva center, you know, or what have you? What's really going on like that?
Box Mary, something like that, don't you?
I think we all did, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, from our understanding of the project, it's going to be a.
I don't know what.
It's going to be a family practice center with doctors. It's not going to be like your, uh, what were the two centers?
Typical, urgent care.
Right, it's, it's going to actually have physical doctors working in that.
Actual providers.
Yes.
Hopefully, most of them along general practice, because we, we don't have.
We know that we do have swords behind them with nurse practitioners and stuff in the area.
And sitting on that board, there are doctors in the pipeline that are due to come here and they just have their space to work. And this facility would provide them with the opportunity to have an office to work out on that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a great thing to have here.
Well, I do too, but I was just, you know, all these things is always going through the grapevine and what have you. Just had a little concerns, people saying it's going to be a Seviva MAP program over there and what have you. And what I was just saying myself, why would we need another facility like that when we have nine already? It's in a ten mile radius of Tasswell. You know, we have New Day Recovery, we have a cash center up there on the Ford Lane. Then we have so many of those Seviva centers down in the Clayville Ridge Lands area. And due to, you know, being up towards CBS where pharmacy is, our food line where our grocery store is, you know, I wouldn't think that would be a good fit, you know? But I heard today, now I'm listening to what y'all saying, but I spoke with a person who's over Seviva and they said, no, we come to Tasswell to the, uh.
Kaczynski's program?
Yes, sir.
That's not true, that's.
Not true.
Not true.
This is the Tasswell Community Foundation. I can try to read the, the letter, my screen is messing up a little bit. So, as you well know, that we are lacking the number of primary care providers to service the needs of our area. And we embark on a recruitment effort that will be producing three new providers, two physicians and one physician assistant in the coming years. I believe that that has increased.
That's doubled.
Yeah, at least doubled since they heard this letter.
That'd be good, but I was just, my concern was, I just didn't need to, didn't think it'd be a good fit for another MAP program to be in the area. Well, like I said, when we have nine in a ten mile radius, you know, Seviva centers ain't the greatest place to be.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Especially in the area.
They're saying about the Kaczynski house, it says on this site, we plan to construct a medical office building that will initially house our two physicians and one physician's assistant with two nurse practitioners currently employed by Thuryan Clinic. So these are going to be primary care providers from what we have been told by the, um, the Tasswell Community Foundation.
Well, it's all along this little clarification, I didn't get them to be here or, you know, but like you say, when you're out here in different places and people come to tell you what's happening in your town or they want to know, they inquisitive and asking what's going on, well, hey, I don't know. But, you know, I'm like, oh, I'm going to go to the meeting and find out what's going on. But if it was going to be a Seviva, so, you know, I'm just a citizen, but I would object to that.
If you can watch the last month's town council video?
I didn't get to do so, so.
Just give me a reference to it, I'm Chris Wareth, who's actually the president of Tasswell.
He's the chairman, yeah.
He's the chairman, but he came and gave his presentation on the end, we were able to ask a few questions, so it might be helpful.
Right, oh, I know, well, that's good, I just wanted a little force, like, but thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
So is that with it? Thanks, Steve.
Thanks.
Welcome to the. The sign union, so council comments. All right, so no comments?
Can I, can I say one thing? Just, just one, real quick. Um, so this weekend, we have the Taste of Tasswell that will be going on on Main Street. We would encourage everyone to go and check that out. And for more information, you can visit Tasswell Today's website or Facebook, and I think it's on the town list as well.
I think they're also going to be selling tickets to that at B Newell. So you could go and buy your tickets in person.
And that's just to promote business on our main street, so please go check that out. And on March the twenty-third at Lincolnshire Park, we will have our Easter egg hunt. So please come check it out.
Still need help filling eggs, right?
Yes, there's a planning commission meeting, not campaign. Promotion, promotion, Tasswell Bay's having their promotion committee meeting is going to be over at, uh, the American Legion Hall. And as part of that meeting, they're going to be filling eggs. And I think that we have two thousand eggs, something around that to be filled. So come help, bring your kids, put them to work.
I'm going to be taking them out.
Come.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Nah, I can't make a motion.
He's entertaining, he's entertaining a motion.
Now I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned, stay tuned by saying aye. All opposed, stay tuned by saying nay.